So, are we all here? Do you want to try to start something?
I actually got a text too, so people aren't paying attention.
The livestream has just started. From joining us, there's been some technical issues across the city with internet, with all of our council members home. Voices were going in and out in video. So, we've now done most of the call by a quell sum still through Zoom. So, we've gotten started. It's about seven forty-four PM. President Dulce, you are welcome to start.
Okay. Let's have a little roll call. So, Jennifer, just to make sure everybody's here if you want to call the roll.
Sure. Councilman Sheldon? Councilwoman Sheldon?
Here.
Oh, yeah. Uh, Councilwoman Jane?
Here.
Coruna?
Here.
Councilman Olson?
Here.
Councilman Olson?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Uh, Eklund?
Here.
Graham Reinhardt?
Here.
And Russell?
Here.
And Dulce?
Here. Okay. Uh, at this point, uh, is there any quick comments?
I do have a few, um, a few things to read. Um, I wanted to note for the record that, uh, after our last work session or our spec meeting, that we received a letter, um, through the mail, uh, from Mr. and Mrs. Charles Hall, just writing in support of what that all the emails have been, but I just wanted to know that the record that they do support the market.
Okay.
And I also received, uh, a form of a letter, going to read at one time. And then, uh, and so, and I hope you all hear me. And within the city, you can teach work on new rules and regulations. However, in light of the decision to separate food trucks and mobile food vendors from the outdoor dining order, this is a special meeting of the city council held on Monday, June sixteenth. I am hoping you would take some time to consider how beneficial a food truck ordinance can be for Jamestown. Food trucks are in demand. People don't want all the food that's always being made. Truck market has quadrupled in the past five years. There are expected projections that it will bring in nearly three billion dollars in 2017. Our city can reap the benefits of this booming new economy. Food trucks are as safe as restaurants and can actually be safer. And these safety measures for food trucks are the famous restaurant. Food trucks tend to perform restaurant and safety inspections. It makes sense. We have one small kitchen we take, we take with us everywhere we go. Food trucks are a financially accessible way for local entrepreneurs to start food businesses. Then a restaurant business is expensive. A food truck can be a way for young people and those who want to be taking out large loans to harness their entrepreneurial spirit and participate in our, in our local economy. We have to see mobile food establishments as business incubators and opportunity for our residents to own and operate their own business. This is an opportunity for the little guy to thrive and as they build their, they can expand into a brick and mortar. Food trucks, a wide range of options, areas that may lack access to food or household food. Rising in a business district or a neighborhood which has food is the only option, food trucks have the ability to load these gaps. Food trucks can help local business. It's not uncommon for food trucks to team up with their local businesses. Food trucks have partnered with local bakeries to have freshly baked bread and pastries. They have developed relationships with breweries to provide food outside of tasting rooms. Food trucks and people out in the street may not normally spend time. When people are out, they tend to step into other local businesses. Successful local food trucks mean more money injected back into the local economy. It's no secret that them folks have money. By not inhibiting food trucks, you are helping to reinforce the city's economic foundation. We hope you will keep these points in mind as you make decisions regarding food trucks in the future. If your concern is competition or with the distance that these letters can be from one another, I would suggest you watch this video on the Nash Equilibrium. It explains why competition inherently wants to mix to each other. And then they, they provided a link to a YouTube video. Um, sincerely, this was, um, they were signed by Christopher Selstrom, Patricia Calamary, uh, Ronnie Wood, Ariel Litt, owner and operator of North East. I did receive another email, um, late in the day today, and I can read that if you would like. Um, Dear Jamestown City Council, this email is in support of food trucks in the downtown area. As a current brick and mortar business downtown, we are in support of permitting food trucks. While we understand the impact this could have on our market share, we feel the city and existing businesses should be evolving and finding innovative ways to support anything that will draw more people and consumers to the downtown. We feel strongly that it is the responsibility of each individual business to find ways to drive their own sales rather than relying on city governmental infrastructure to do so. Although we appreciate and heavily rely on and any all word of mouth referrals, part of our responsibility as business owners and entrepreneurs is to understand each product that provides services and products that are within market demands, and that is ever changing. We acknowledge the challenge of consumers having more options to food trucks to admit it. At Crown Street, we look forward to continuing to provide quality products, hospitality, and continue to find new ways to serve our custom community. Thank you for your time and consideration. Michael and Sybick, Crown Street Roasting, coming sixteen months third street, Jamestown. And that is.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we can move on to our report from committees and the finance committee and Chairwoman, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple resolutions, and then, of course, um, we will be discussing the audit as well. So, I'd like to go through the resolutions first because they're quick. Um, first resolution is that the city comptroller B and hereby is authorized to make the following amendment to the 2020 general fund budget to recognize Phase One Nineteenth Financial Restructuring Plan as approved by city council on June eighth, 2020. Decrease estimated revenues, one million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. And then, decrease appropriations, one million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. And just to note that, um, the decrease in increase is, is really due, is, or is all the decreases are due to, um, in detail on pretty much every line in the budget with varying amounts. Um, the detail is available on the city, on the city website for each department, and that is be due, all due to COVID and the revenue that has not come in.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments on that? Okay.
The second resolution is resolved that the city of Jamestown location code two zero zero two two hereby establishes the following standard work base for these titles and will report to the officials of New York State and local retirement system based on the timekeeping records or their records of activity. And these specific positions are for the mayor, Edward A. Sunquist, Councilwoman Kimberly Eklund, Councilman Timo Graham Reinhardt, Councilman Anthony Dulce, Councilman Thomas Nelson, and Councilman Grant Wilson.
Okay. And I was thinking it, those names because of the ones that are registered with the New York State Retirement System.
That's correct. And it's mandatory reporting, and it's done probably every two years. Okay. The third resolution, resolve that the mayor and the city and he hereby is authorized is to enter into an agreement with the Municipal Insurance Consultants Incorporated, seventeen eighty Worley Drive, Williamsville, New York, one four two two one, as insurance advisor for property and real insurance for the period of April fifteenth, twenty twenty through April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of seventeen thousand and no cents with one half of the cost paid by the Board of Public Utilities, subject to the approval of Corporation Council as to form. Um, Joe, are you on here? Joe Ryan? Okay. I can barely hear him. I heard the yes, I am. Can anybody else hear him?
No, he's way back in the.
Yeah, just barely.
Okay. Uh, well, I'll just make a statement, and if Eddie want to add something? This is a yearly, um, consultancy that we've paid. I believe this is a renewal with municipal insurance. This isn't a vendor that we're unfamiliar with, so I recommend it. I don't know if Eddie or anyone else wants to add anything, anyone that can be heard.
Sure. Councilwoman Eklund, this is the mayor. I'll, I'll answer that. Um, yes, this is a, this is what we typically go through to help us apply actual savings in property and casualty insurance. Um, I've actually personally connected with Municipal Insurance Consultants, um, over last month to talk about our current process. They've actually not changed the amount that they've charged us for, I don't know, ten years or more. Uh, so it's been the amount, and they've been excellent in trying to, uh, savings as well handling some management along with the BPU. So, definitely we, we recommend it, uh, after speaking to the individual personally, as well as talking to Joe and Ryan.
Correct. Thank you very much. Any other questions on it? Okay. The final resolution for us tonight is of the mayor, and he hereby authorized to execute order number two, cleaning sidewalk ramps, phase contract with our Patty Concrete Excavating LLC, P.O. Box three zero one, Jamestown, New York, with the clue changes to the five. Adding six hundred and forty-six square feet flatwork, four inches, at seventeen dollars a square foot. Thirty-seven point five linear feet curb and gutter at fifty-five dollars per linear foot. Eleven hundred and six point five linear feet concrete removal landscape and removing twenty-five point five square feet flatwork, six inches, at seventeen fifty a square foot. Twenty square feet carrying detectable warning plates at forty-eight dollars a square foot and sixteen square feet fiberglass glass detectable warning plates at thirty dollars a square foot for a total in piece of eleven thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and seventy-five cents, subject to the approval of Corporation Council as to form.
Okay.
Not find, you want to make some comments?
Yeah, um, so there typo in the ad, the last, it should be a hundred and ten point six five linear feet.
Okay.
Okay, the math add.
Got it.
And all this is to close out of the, uh, the contract that we're doing, uh, concrete ramps. Been, uh, on the Main Street project that you've probably all seen, uh, it was completed last, last week.
Okay.
Josh, uh, this is Grant. Uh, Josh, this is Grant. Why is the, uh, change?
Oh, the, the, there's additional blocks need to be, uh, pulled, uh, to make the ADA ramps compliant. Uh, we pulled on to a tree dump that was removed. Uh, and as you can see, there was some things that get changed from four to six. It's, it's really not that big of a change based on the scope of the work.
I will just note that this, this type of change is not, um, honest enough. Uh, Jeff, uh, you get into the breadth of the project, things change.
Right. Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay.
Uh, review the twenty nineteen audit of financial statement by John Tassalo. He had.
Johnny, what?
Um, I'm sorry, before Mr. Tassalo, uh, did you receive a, a second eye agenda on Friday?
For all of us or?
Yeah, it was, I wanted to be honest, but that should have gone out on Friday. There were two res, uh, at it under finance, um, DOD.
But they.
They were apologizing, uh, yeah. We have the information.
Um, let me look right now. I do. I just got them. It came, it didn't come from, it came from Leanne, so I see now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was out of the office on Friday.
That's okay. Uh, I'll be real quick.
Okay.
Resolution five is resolved that the mayor be, and he hereby is authorized to enter into a lease agreement with Minnesota Corporation for rental of approximately six hundred, sixty-eight square feet of office space on the third floor of the municipal building for use of office space, which lease show commence July twenty eighth, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one,
with an option to renew for an additional one year period, and the ride for rental payment is following. July first, twenty twenty-two hundred per month, January first, twenty twenty-one. It, and it's such a proof of the breaking.
I have any questions?
And number six, is that the mayor be, he write this off right? Cause he got, of course, we want to help Main Street bridges utilizing the, uh, dollars. If you remember, here in my, this is the first of the deal, finally come back fruition of mayor. Hold on, what do you think?
Uh, this is, this is Eddie. Uh, yes, so we're finally, uh, funded, uh, our, we've been told the, uh, is there even though we, uh, per, um, state. With, um, uh, uh, good on this table.
Um, yeah, the only, uh, it's, it's put on hold due to the, uh, for, um, and being halted for a bit time. Um, this, uh, the, uh, approved, um, there were, uh, for, like, anticipation, and we can, uh, uh.
Much, should be all financing with such, uh, with John Tassalo.
Okay, John, you there?
Uh, uh. Can you? Oh? Can you hear me? Hello? Our mobile. The computer. He's in the computer. John, if you could call in.
Hello?
Um.
Do you?
We can get him to call in and move on and do the other thing first, or?
Yes, that's no problem. I'll, I'll give John a call and tell him to call in while you guys. It's just.
Get the, uh, can you? Hello? Let's go on to, uh, there was nothing on the housing, if you had anything more. Yeah. I can't, my phone on mute. I don't think I. Talking, that's all. We're all having, uh, we have you, uh, for, um, that they, um, come and, and, uh, everything came up today. The, was, uh, is the city thankful for repairing lawn on the chair or is it, um? They, they did, uh, neighborhood nine, it, um, they, now, I assume it, probably their contractor, whoever, came and actually fixed Arlington and Beachview. I don't know if you watched, I don't know, they, they have repairs, so I assume they're making their, all that. Josh, they have.
Oh, they fixed it. Yeah, the fixing are the, the, actually, uh, the terrace. They had to fix their, the base, they worked it, uh, those, they had, and heated it, and they did, just eating everything on there. It was scarier. Just that, one? There was the, um, gas company that came, yes, National Star, yeah, Special Fuel, came and ripped out some of the yard, you know, the yard and, they, so built up the on this side, they did that, and was told that the city was responsible.
If you can, uh, we can, uh, we'll check it out.
Uh, thank you.
Okay. Anything else from housing?
Yeah, the members having, uh, that, uh, that.
Res, for his resolutions, I believe, um, and, or anything that you want to add? I don't know if I can, uh. I believe. I don't know what I need. I mean. You're in. I'm muted. Oh, okay. I'm, uh, I don't, uh, I know we, uh, messages going around regarding the fireworks. Is that probably? Yeah, I had, uh, I was gonna report, yeah, the, uh, for, um, the situation with that around the city. So, Bob, I don't know if you, I, I had talked to him earlier today, uh, update, uh, so. Yeah, can you just hear me? Yep. Yes.
Across this duty, I probably would call that numbers now, you know, turning four with eighty-four coming along as project was, as well. The agencies surrounding us are even, um, Denver, seventy-one, um, Sheriff for Miss thirty-five, no seventeen, would want, we kind of get chose two just to, just to assist it. We, we, uh, under a zero tolerance when we can to enforce this, we're a appearance ticket. Are there, uh, we, we could, uh, this, uh, that, uh, using styles that we would do this for analysts, uh, some location that. The day, uh.
I just want people to know that we're all, but, and it was both email messages that we are out there doing, we kind of try to alleviate this, this, this problem, and I think Captain Isaacson actually said it's about a four hundred and thirty percent increase over last year's fireworks complaints.
Yeah. Man, today, uh, so this is Mayor Sunquist. So, uh, there's a couple things that we've, uh, we have, uh, directed patrols, uh, grounds for fireworks. It's not really sustainable to, 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 we have, because like, all the, uh, and they're all, that, um, with downtown, and, uh, in it, there is a, uh, kind of a, an addition of, uh, more fireworks that have, that are being sold during this time period. Uh, we've got a lot of firework companies, uh, that we would normally utilize to do, the fireworks are actually selling off their supplies too. So, we are seeing an increase, uh, in fireworks just being sold to different communities across New York State. Uh, so we are trying whatever, to do whatever we can in order to stop it. We understand the issues. We have been working on a PSA for it, uh, and will continue to do so. Uh, and we are asking our council members, if, if any council member would like to, um, write any letter or be part of it, we will include you guys as part of that, uh, and try to get the word out there to your commu, to your parts of the community.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't know, uh, Dulce, just, just a comment on that. I was watching the view, they, you know, the Goldberg, uh, was saying about the fireworks. So, it's just not, uh, it, it may do.
It seems to be the, for some reason, and, and we're anticipating in the next probably two or three weeks, it could get worse. Uh, as you know, there's no, there's no fireworks per se on the fourth this year, as far as organized fireworks. So, uh, we're anticipating that we're probably gonna have lots of private shows around. So, uh, yeah. All right. Well, thank you, Captain Samison, for the update.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and, you know, everybody just stay vigilant and, you know, send it, uh, the complaint in, and, uh, if you have assets and vigils, they can follow through and, and do the best we can to try to put, put a damper on that, so. Okay. Uh, is John there? Do you want to see around?
I, I am here.
You are? Okay. Yeah. You're loud and clear, John.
I thought, I could just talk to my iPad, but I guess I can't.
No, it was all muffled and cut out and everything, so. You're loud and clear now, so, uh, we'll give you the floor and, uh, you can add it.
All right. Uh, this, uh, quickly, uh, basically, uh, we'll go to two thousand nineteen audit report. And, uh, basically, there's five major sections, the audit opinion, uh, the management discussion and analysis, the government-wide financial statements, the fund financial statements, and then the federal, uh, expenditures. So, basically, we'll start out, uh, with the independent auditor's report, which is on page one. Basically, there's unmodified opinion, uh, no reportable conditions or material weaknesses or no. Uh, pages three through eleven is the management analysis. Uh, this is basically the only section of the financial statements where you, where you will get concern from year to year and, and develop any trends or conclusions, uh, regarding those results. Uh, going to page the statement of financial position. This is on the full accrual basis of accounting. uh, which this basically includes decapitation assets, long-term liabilities, and the liability group. Uh, we'll just focus on the governmental activities, which raises the council, but the other column, uh, business-type activities, that would be for the BPU, and then the total city as a whole. Uh, so, under the governmental activities, see, there's a total net position, basically, net equity or deficit of a hundred and twenty-seven million. A hundred and sixty-seven million of that is unrestricted and, and, uh, the main reason for that is a total liability which is above of, uh, a hundred and sixty million, and the two pension liabilities for recent fire, an employee retirement system, one for point-two million, uh, the other for one point-seven million. Uh, page thirteen is a statement of activities, basically, again, on a full accrual, uh, which shows the full accrual expenses and revenues, uh, for the year. Pages, page fourteen, now we'll get to the section that, uh, this council will manage the basis. Uh, this is on a fund basis of accounting, so we have assets of nine million thirty-nine thousand. This is a snapshot as of December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. We have cash equivalents as of the end year of four million two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, receivables of two million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We have total liabilities of four nine thousand, which leaves us at, as of the year, of four million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, of which, uh, three, three million eight hundred and one thousand is unassigned, and million forty-six thousand is, uh, non-spendable. Very important numbers to focus on moving, uh, into subsequent years. Uh, page sixteen, and we'll just touch base, uh, here, and then we'll get into the budget and actual later on. But on page sixteen, you'll see, we just focus on, uh, six million nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand in revenues. Total expenditures of thirty-five million seven hundred and twenty-two thousand. Uh, we did have a, a new debt issuance this year, uh, refunding bond issuance. We received a two hundred and twenty-nine thousand by pre, and the issuance was eight thousand. So, for the year, uh, we had a net change in our fund balance of one million four hundred and eight thousand. Started with three million four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and ended the year with four million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand. Now, we'll get into the, the notes to the financial statements. We'll go to page twenty-four, which is a summary of significant accounting policies, and those run through for a while. Based on policies used by, uh, by the city are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and governmental, um, accounting, in accordance with the governmental accounting standards. I'd just like to bring your attention to, uh, let's see here. Uh, if you go to page thirty-one, uh, item each subsequent events, and I heard, listening to the meeting where we, you had some budget amendments, and, uh, if you read this subsequent events footnote, it was, uh, you know, regarding the World Health Organization, uh, declaring this public health emergency. Uh, so, basically, the results of this emergency, this pandemic, uh, what's gonna happen as a result, it is really unknown to management, to council. Uh, so, uh, and, and one of those things is that budget amendment that, uh, that was just passed. So, there may be more of those coming, uh, as the year as two thousand twenty progresses. Uh, page thirty-three, note three are constitutional tax margins, uh, which is based on the average full vision of real estate. So, the average value between, uh, for the years two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen is six hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Our constitutional tax limit, which is based on two percent of that average, is thirteen million three hundred and forty-seven thousand. Uh, our total levy for two thousand nineteen was sixteen million eleven. There's, uh, exclusions for debt service and general, and for budget operations for capital expenditure. So, the tax levy, uh, subject to the limit, was the thirteen million three forty-seven. So, our constitutional tax margin was zero. Uh, page thirty-four, capital assets. In the middle of the page there, you'll see, uh, total capital assets at the beginning of the year, you'll see were ninety-three million twenty thousand. Uh, during the year spent, three million eight hundred and fifteen thousand in, in, uh, capital expenditures. Two million six hundred and thirty-four was for infrastructure, which basically includes roads, sidewalks, storm sewers, et cetera. Buildings and structures, seven forty-eight thousand. Equipment, three hundred and forty-six thousand, and vehicles, a hundred and eighty-six thousand. Uh, page three, I'm sorry, thirty-six is our long-term debt, uh, our constitutional debt limit. Uh, it is four, five, four, our total, our total, uh, debt contract margin. We're only at twenty-five percent, uh, movement, uh, from twenty-nine percent the, the year before. So, we'll go to the middle of the page, under total governmental activities. So, we started the year with fifteen million eight hundred and nineteen thousand in long-term debt. Uh, during the year, we added, uh, two million three hundred and forty-two thousand. Uh, that, that was basically the, uh, issuance of that refunding bond along with the corresponding premium and issuance costs. Uh, we retired three million seven hundred and twenty-six thousand in debt. Uh, we end the year fourteen million four five thousand, uh, in, so that's down from fifteen eight nineteen the year before. And it, just a, uh, just an item to note is the compensated absences, uh, at the end of the year was two, total two million thirty-one thousand, which was down from a million one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, uh, the year before. Uh, page forty, uh, top of page forty, note six. Basically, you'll see a breakdown, historical breakdown of, uh, the general funds account to near state and local system. Eight hundred and sixty-six thousand this year compared to eighty-three the year before, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand the year before. Just move over a couple columns, you'll see the contributions to the, uh, police and fire retirement system. Uh, two mil- million eleven hundred thousand this year compared to a million nine eighty-one, and two million one seventy-seven. If you go to the middle, uh, just down below under section two, uh, under the new Gatsby standards, not very new, now, it's about three or four years old. Uh, but the city's share of the employee retirement system liability overall, just the city's share, uh, is four million two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Uh, for police and fire retirement system, because it is, uh, overall, the system is in a deficit, deficit situation, uh, the city's portion of that deficit is four million, uh, two six three thousand. Uh, page, uh, what page of? Section three. Okay, page forty-five, uh, talks about other post-employee benefits other than pension. This is basically the health insurance that we, uh, provide, uh, for retired employees. Uh, page forty-five gives a prescription, number of employees covered and retirees. Uh, page four, focused on governmental activities. Uh, so, we started the year with an OPEB liability of a hundred and sixty-two million. Changes for the year include service costs, interest, changes in benefit terms, and differences between expect, expected and actual experience and assumptions. So, the change for the year was a million seven hundred and sixty-two thousand. So, we actually, the liability actually decreased to a hundred and sixty-six, ten, four, twelve as of December thirty-first, just for governmental activities. Okay, page forty-nine. Uh, note twelve, labor negotiations, uh, we're still out there, uh, regarding the, uh, the arbitration panel's decision, uh, waiting for a court, uh, date on that. Okay, page fifty-seven is our budget to actual comparison. So, for the year, our final budget, uh, was, for revenues was thirty-six million three fifty. Action at thirty-six million nine fifty-seven, so that was a favorable variance of six hundred and six thousand. Total, uh, budgeted expenditures, thirty-six million three fifty. Actual, thirty-five million seven twenty-two, so again, a favorable variance of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Uh, and we had a favorable variance in our other sources resulting from the bond, uh, refunding issuance of a hundred and seventy-three thousand. So, for the year, uh, we budgeted a break even, and we ended up with a surplus of a million four hundred and eight thousand four sixty-nine. Uh, page fifty-eight, again, it's required disclosure, gives historical data on the OPEB, uh, liability. Pages fifty-nine and sixty, page fifty-nine gives a history of the police and fire, uh, retirement system and employer retirement systems, uh, the contributions for the last ten years, and what you'd wanna look at here is percentage of, of the, um, covered payroll, and how that has changed or remained consistent over the years. You can see the historical, uh, contribution as a percentage of gross payroll. Uh, page sixty, uh, gives the historical information regarding the city's liability, uh, for the ERS and police and fire retirement system, historical information. And we're only showing the last five years because that's when the new, uh, governmental accounting standard came out, was, uh, effective for fifteen. So, so, uh, five more years, we'll have that page filled up. Okay, uh, page sixty-three gives you an idea of the, uh, federal, federal money expended by the city. Uh, we spent a million five oh eight on the CDBG program. We spent five hundred and thirty-seven thousand on the home, uh, in partnership program. And spent thirty-five thousand on the brownfield assessment cleanup, uh, cooperative grant to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Uh, page sixty-four, summary of auditor results regarding, uh, federal awards. No material weaknesses, uh, no significant deficiencies, no items of non-compliance, uh, unmodified opinion. It's, uh, it's, it went very well. The audit went very well. Page is sixty-six, again, uh, relates to federal programs. Uh, this is compliance and other matters, the opinion on that. And finally, is on compliance, um, required by uniform and, and as it pertains to federal awards. And again, that was a unmodified opinion. So, in addition to the financial, I don't know what, what you have in front of you, but there was a management letter, uh, and the management letter talked about constitutional tax margin limit. It talked about liability, and it talked about training and cross-training employees. There's a lot of transition going on at the city at every level, and, and, uh, it helps to have, uh, the exiting, stay and train, uh, new, the new employees, uh, tr- to, for, for the, for the transition, uh, to go a little smooth, to go smoothly. Um, there's also a communication with those charges of governance during planning, and the final correspondence, uh, communication with those charges of governance concludes the audit. If there were any problems during the audit, it would have been documented in this letter, but previously mentioned there were, uh, no, no issues, uh, whatsoever this, this year. Everything went well. And that's it.
John, John, thank, this is McLean. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Um, I'm probably one of the few who gets excited to get this nice book number.
Thanks.
But I truly appreciate-
Yes, Kim, you probably are. You do know.
I truly appreciate, I know what goes into this, and I know the amount of work you spend with the help of Joe and Ryan and other city staff members put into this. So, um, I know this latter, I thank you on behalf of myself, um, and all other council members, but also for the residents of the city because you have done an outstanding job for these years, and you will truly be missed in this role. Many other people do not understand that, but, um, I do, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it. And, um, mayor, um, in our past, we've not included the managerial letter.
I'm sorry? Okay.
Yeah, go.
Um, a couple things. Uh, one, Ryan and I are trying to talk John into doing another year, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. Uh, two, my mess by forward letter and the, uh, in the correspondence of those charges of governance and the, uh, with governance exclusion. I, I will email desire, uh, before I leave the office here.
Okay. And, and Joe, again, I know this is your last week, so I truly cannot thank you enough for everything through the years. And I think it needs to be on record, um, you know, your dedication and willing to say to Kim, you are, how much you care about the city. And I truly appreciate you in my sixteen, well, seventeen years, sixteen and a half years on council, always being the one that I could run to and ask any questions and get a straight answer whether it was something I wanted to hear or not. So, thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, Kim, and I believe the mayor's gonna give me a few minutes towards the end. I would like to thank you and, and a bunch of other people as well, so I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Very good. Good, thank you. I was gonna mention about, uh, uh, John last year. I don't know how many audits we've been through, John, but hopefully you'll be around for another one or two, but that would be, that would be good.
Yeah. I thought two thousand eighteen was gonna be my last one. We'll, we'll, we'll play it by ear. It's kinda, you know, it, it's not about me. It's not about Joe. It's about the city, and, and, you know, we're thinking about, if you need me around one more year, just, just me.
Okay. Yes. Um, is there anybody that has any other questions about the audit itself? If not, I would just, you know, like every other year, they can tell you, call you, or Joe, to try to, you know, any, any other specific clarification or thing. But I know it's a lot of information. It's sixty-some pages of, of numbers and, and things that, you know, most people probably, with exception, Kim, for some. Uh, if anybody has any other specific question, just a brief comment, uh, again, you know, the year, uh, went very well. Uh, you know, it's nice to have the three-point-eight, uh, million-dollar, uh, fund balance, the undesignated fund balance to utilize. And, uh, you know, it's a testimony to, to all the department heads and to the entire staff and councils for the last year to this point. So, you know, we do have, again, you know, we'll- again, you know, we always talk about unforeseen issues and obviously nobody could foresee what, what was gonna lie ahead here in twenty twenty, so, uh, the rainy day has hit and, uh, you know, gonna need every, every penny of what we've worked hard to, to build up. Thank you.
Father, go, just a quick comment, I was just wondering, is there a way that you could let the, uh, who are listening know if they, if there's any people who are like Kim that would like to go through these numbers? How they can, how, how they can, um, come back with this report, could you let them know?
I believe that it's on the website, isn't it, Jim?
I'll have to, I'll have to go up site.
Right.
Okay, I just, that, okay, thank you, just want people to know that.
Right, at some point it'll be.
I'll send that to Zach in the morning.
Right, and as always, if anybody else has a specific question, we all have them and they can certainly, uh, contact one of the council.
Yes.
All right, is there anything else then for finance?
Tony, this is Brent, can you hear me?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Right, and so I guess, uh, but.
Can you hear me, this is Brent?
So, Councilman Nelson?
Tony.
Yeah.
Hello.
Yeah.
This is Brent.
We can hear Brent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to, with the public safety, there was a couple of things I wanted to talk about.
Oh, okay, go, I'm sorry, we go on that, okay, there, John came in, so go ahead. Well, Paul, thank you, you still have time, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge the veto from the mayor about the outdoor dining. And, you know, the big sticking point there, of course, is the food trucks. So, wonder what we need to do, modify that law, that ordinance to get passed. One hundred feet, some, two hundred feet, which we saw on the map, that pretty well excludes the whole downtown area. So, can I propose a separation distance of a hundred and fifty feet?
Well, what's our, uh, we, I mean, it was not on the agenda, I guess the question is, what's the range on which, we do have a voting session next week, and then it would be July. Can't, you know, if, what, under new business, somebody makes a proposal to, you know, a formal proposal, have, submit, and then, you know, we can vote there, I, I guess, you know, we could, we could proceed that way.
But, but, I couldn't hear, um, it was, anybody was saying.
Correct me if I, Brian, Brent, that we have the food truck, uh, to a hundred and fifty, a hundred, is that correct?
Yes, one hundred and fifty feet separation between brick and mortar and food trucks.
Uh, to that.
And we can try to.
I think there were some more issues present.
Go ahead, Kim.
Can we schedule?
I think there was.
Is, is he on the computer, I don't, he, he should call in.
I can't hear Brent at all.
I know, he needs to call in, he needs to call in.
Brent, are, are you on, or we can't hear you?
I'm talking through my phone. Yeah, I'm on my phone.
You know, it's.
Are you on the computer?
Do you have Zoom open?
It's, I'm, I'm, he.
He's calling through Zoom on my phone.
Turn off your computer.
Brent, you have your computer open or on? Does your call zoom out?
It's, it's, my, my link is off.
Okay. I don't know, bad connection, you're cutting in and out, so it's hard to hear.
Yeah.
I know, that, that's saying, can we have a meeting after this meeting? Maybe a small in-person meeting?
I'd rather. I would rather, if we're having a meeting, schedule it down the road because right now this connection is terrible.
Yeah.
And, and I also know, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought Crystal was putting together some information and was going to reach out to some local businesses and maybe get some more explanation out there and some other things. Uh, I don't, haven't seen any communication on that yet, so I, I would like, personally would like to see some of that as well.
Maybe Jeff could get those lists that he, of people he had talked to as well.
I spoke to Crystal informally and suggested the hundred and fifth, which was splitting the difference between the hundred and two hundred feet. And she did indicate that she was going to reach out to some of the businesses to find out what their, um, feelings were about having the food trucks in that range in the neighborhood, or excuse me, in the downtown district. So, I don't know, they've had a lot going on, um, I don't know how far she got with that, but I did inform these people.
Can, can I suggest, Tony, that after this meeting, we communicate and figure out the, the best way to go moving forward on this?
Yeah, that, that might be.
If it's a meeting, if it's a meeting later in the week, if it's, you know, what you just suggested, your new business or whatever, because I hardly hear Brent at all.
It's kind of awkward, right? I just try to get the, uh, uh, com- call.
And you can't, you can't hear.
This is, this is Grant, I just want, want to be known that I do, um, think it'd be a good idea to talk about, I think we can find a compromise, 'cause I think we can make this food truck thing working, get everybody, you know, make.
Well, I guess, I mean, I don't think you're gonna make everybody happy, but that's, you know.
Right, to enjoy, yeah, right.
No matter what we pass or don't pass.
No, the problem.
But, you know, again, compromises, right.
Yeah, so I agree, I, I, Councilwoman, uh, Eklund, if we could, uh, maybe schedule another meeting sometime this week and, uh, you know, whenever, to look on this, to talk about this once Crystal has enough time to get the information to us. And in addition to the other conversations people have had.
Right, so that probably would be a good idea. I'd, I'd agree, try to schedule something later on in the week. And we do that, we need someone to.
Yeah, you know, I don't, um, Mayor and Crystal, if you could set something up or whatever you need to do.
Sure, sure thing, this is, uh, this is the mayor, um, just so you guys are aware, some of us are working from City Hall, um, we've actually lost power at City Hall, uh, so Crystal may not be with us anymore, um.
Oh, okay.
I'm here.
Oh, she's still here, great.
Yep.
Are you in the dark?
So, we're, we're, we're working, believe it or not.
Literally, physically.
Exactly, we, we will, uh, we're happy to set something up, we'll, uh, I will follow up, I'll have Michaela, uh, my assistant, reach out to folks to try to set up a, a meeting for everyone to discuss.
Great, that's good.
That'd be a lot easier, because this is, it's difficult to do this right here, right now, so, okay?
Exactly.
Anything else perhaps?
Thank you. No, nothing else that can come away.
Can we move on to public works? Okay, uh, Councilman Nelson is under Public Works, I know there's a few things here if you wanted to go through.
Yes, uh, can you hear me? Okay, uh, well, first, I had a, this was a, that the director of Public Works is authorized to purchase construction materials and services at the price as quoted to the county of Chautauqua and support in the Chautauqua County Twenty-Twenty Construction Season Purchasing Guide, which I think is a pretty standard resolution we do every year. Um, then, uh, we had the same, uh, resolution we had in Finance for the change order. Um, so I don't know that we need to do that again, I think we're, we're good there. Um, and then we had the same resolution that the mayor, uh, is authorized and directed to enter into a contractual agreement with IPL Corp. For the illumination of the Washington and South Main Street bridges using the, uh, DRI fund. Um, and then there were other four discussions, uh, the ADA sidewalk ramps. And, uh, I, I come up earlier under Finance as well?
No.
No, it's. Okay, um, let's see.
It was, Tom, it was just a two thousand and nineteen change order, so, we didn't.
Okay, uh, this is a, and then Jeff, I got your email earlier, um, regarding this for, the, well, it's a bid for, uh, bid tabulation and opener, I'm looking at this, trying to look at three different screens here, um, was, uh, our Patty Concrete?
That's correct.
Yep, for one hundred ninety thousand nine sixty-five. Correct, okay. Um, let's see, I, there were some other things, uh, Jeff, that came up. I just wanted to amend the Newton Avenue construction, um, for, well, this is a proposal for sidewalk repair on Newton Avenue between Carey Place and Sturgis. And, uh, Jeff, any comments on that? You had Husky InterRide from Lakewood, New York was a low, uh, three, and came in at nineteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. I don't know if there's anything else to discuss on that?
Sidewalk improvements to, uh, block rent money, uh.
Right.
That was, that because that area was, uh, denoted, uh, a pathway to the school, major corridor to the serving school, it's been on the books for about three years now.
Um, and then, this might come under really old business, but this was, uh, Patient's Pharmacy, uh, asking about a handicap parking request, and I think Chris Brown, uh, recommended that we take a handicap, that we were, we put a new handicap space, replace the load zone, um, which he recommended, I thought was a good idea. Uh, if you wanna mention anything about that, but.
Yeah, in his discussions with the pharmacy, they said that so many people are abusing the load zone that it wasn't warm. So, they, uh, made a lot more sense to make it a handicap space. They originally were asking for two spaces, we, we, you know, spending, we look at one, see where that takes us, and possibly we get a two, uh, for a street.
Yeah, I, I thought it was a good idea and I, I thought, um, that was the right thing to, so, well, grab that. Um, again, I'm kind of working with a couple different, uh, resources here. I, I did wanna mention, this is not on the agenda, but, you know, we don't get a lot of good news sometimes, and I, I got a letter, uh, from a Mike Blackman and Pat Anzadillo, who, uh, and just, just to summarize their letter, they wrote a letter complaining about pot on Vigley Street, which is my, my, and they wrote the letter, uh, or called, I think, I'm s- I'm sorry, they called on a Thursday afternoon, and then the puddles were filled Friday. And they were very thankful and appreciative for that, and they were, uh, and I think we don't give our Department of Public Works enough credit, and so I just wanna thank them for that letter. Um, uh, let's see, I, I guess some things up for discussion, the skateboard park. Is that? Yeah, sure.
We took proposals, uh, we received three, three proposals, uh, all for the full amount of the five hundred thousand dollars. As a design bill, there's, there's really nothing to bid on per se. Um, the, the team reviewed the proposals, we looked at the, uh, we kind of let our, our professional, uh, skateboard folks on the committee, uh, lead us in this, 'cause, uh, we don't have a lot of skateboard, uh, experience here in the city. They try it once in the eighties.
Yeah. Jeff, aren't you a big skateboarder, come on?
Uh, and the committee chose, uh, Grind Line Concrete Skateboard Park Design Construction's proposal. They're out of Seattle, Washington, uh, they are trying to team up with some local contractors. So, we'd like to put that proposal forward. This is money primarily being, or project primarily being funded by the grant through the, uh, Tony Hawk Foundation, uh, and it's going over on the, uh, railroad, uh, site, uh, at, at Gifford, at Eighth and Chelmsford in Gifford.
Jeff, I.
One seventeen Fairmount.
Jeff, I saw that, it's been cleared, but over there in that old, uh, area, is that us doing that?
Uh, yeah, we did that over the, uh, over the fall, kind of fall, winter. We had some time where the weather was good, uh, so we had DPW crews in there cleaning out the site. There was all the, uh, the brick that had, uh, been, demolition was done, uh, the buildings were, backfilled with the existing brick from the, uh, now the project was coming up, it was pretty clear we needed to get rid of all the bricks, so DPW and Parks spent a few weeks over there, kind of in the off-season.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Jeff, could you mention what, I think Lakeshore Paving has sent work they're doing there as well?
Well, one, one of the bidders was Lakeshore Paving, and they, and they were, they were on a team, um, a team of about four different, I had read it to you, it's my office right now, a team of four different, uh, companies, uh, not local. One was local, CPL was a, part of their team. Like you said, they've already talked to, uh, Grind Line about possibly doing some, some of the construction work on the job. They didn't seem too upset about not getting the project.
Okay, but that was more sidewalks and driveway herbs?
Not the skateboard park, more sidewalk drives.
Right. Okay. Okay, um, I don't know, did we, do, there was also, uh, our, an RPF, uh, for concrete repairs to main, uh, Eighth Street to Kinry, did we, did that come up earlier?
No, that's a. That's a, that's a CDBG project.
Okay.
Sidewalk work, uh, between ma- uh, between Eighth and Eighth and Kingsbury, uh.
Okay.
Sound going, or sound, uh, getting ready to go, uh, as part of our main, main street, uh, rehabilitation project, I don't know, Crystal might wanna jump in on this. Or maybe not.
Crystal's sitting in the dark somewhere at City Hall.
She's, she should still be on, I think.
Sorry, I'm right here.
We were just talking about the, the sidewalk project on, on Main Street, uh, to, to, uh, create some of those sidewalks.
Yeah, so, it's just, I guess it's, I don't know what more you, you want. It's money set aside through this CDBD program. Yeah, I'm good, thank you. Sorry, we're, we're in the dark here, so I've got people checking on me. Um, so, yeah, we're just, uh, you know, working to coordinate and prioritize and, um, been working with, with DPW to identify those areas that are needed, so.
Okay. Uh, so that's it for Public Works, unless, uh, Jeff, did I miss anything?
The only other one is under old business. We had a request for a blind citizen sign from the, uh, Blind Association.
Okay. That's right.
Six George Avenue, um, and we are working with them, wanting to get signs up, trying to get some more information on, you know, the individual requesting it, but that shouldn't be a problem.
Good. Okay.
Any others? Okay, thank you. Uh, I guess that's it for, uh, committee reports. Uh, I guess we can move on to, uh, Mayor, do you have any remarks tonight?
I, I do, uh, hold on, let me try to light up my booklet I have. So, updates, uh, for the council members and for the community. Number one, um, we got a, a lot of questions about the parks, uh, and specifically playground equipment. Uh, the governor's executive order from, uh, last week allowed municipalities to open up playground equipment. Um, we did not want to do so until we knew it was going to be safe to do so. Uh, so last, uh, late last week, um, we, we did the way to sanitize, uh, the playground equipment. So the playground equipment is sanitized, uh, once a day, uh, and has now been opened back up for use. Uh, so I know we've gotten a lot of phone calls, uh, from constituents about that. Just wanted to let the public know, as well as the council know, that that is now open.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep, uh, the second, uh, is just an update in regards to the CHIPS Fund Program. Uh, this afternoon, uh, uh, Jeff Lehman had notified me that we'd received our award letter for the CHIPS funding, which goes to do our road repair. Uh, I'll note that we had, we thought and estimated that we would need to cut our road budget, uh, this year by a third. Uh, it turns out, we were only received a cut of about, of about twenty percent. Uh, so we are fine so far this year. Uh, we just have to reimburse them much earlier than normal, uh, in order to get the funding, uh, from the state.
That's good news, thank you.
Uh, the next thing I have is just update on the Human Rights Commission. I know there's been some discussion on that. For our council members and for the public, we've received over seventy applications for that commission. Uh, my office and we're going through all the different applications, uh, to see if, uh, any of those individuals write. There's twelve spots that we have available. So that is taking a little bit more time than I expected, uh, given the amount of applications that we received. Uh, but you can tell our community is very passionate about this, and, and that's a really great thing. Uh, so more to come. I'm hoping to have those squared away in the real world. I have, have those with the council members, uh, by Thursday, uh, but we may have to postpone to the next voting session, uh, for the commission.
Uh, Mayor Sunquist, is there a way on that we can have a look at the?
Uh, yes, if you, if you'd like to look to see, uh, would you like all, you can look all seventy, Vicky?
I, yes, I would.
Sure.
I, I don't know about everybody else, but I would like to just see who was.
I'd like to see it too.
I think we all would.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm happy, I'm happy to send those, uh, those applications over. Some individuals interest, are interested in other, uh, committees, so, uh, we will, uh, we will make sure that certain information is redacted, and we can provide those to you guys. Um, of course, uh, just a, um, one more for me. Uh, I have a chief, uh, just so everyone's aware, obviously, uh, Chief Snellings, uh, will be retiring, uh, July tenth. Um, it's part of that, recognized to be much, much longer person to find the right person for police chief. So we will, uh, or I do intend on appointing an, uh, acting police chief, uh, as we get to, uh, Chief Snellings' retirement. Uh, then we will, we, she will have a process for the application of police chief. We will be opening up that, um, application process to both internal and external candidates for the month of July, from July first to the end of July. Um, after we received, uh, the applications and vetted through them to ensure that have the qualifications necessary, I'll then be putting together a recommendation committee, uh, made up of council members, some members from police, fire, and some members from the community. Uh, those individuals will then have the interview applicants and make a recommendation of top three candidates, uh, which I will then appoint and have council, uh, go through their confirmation process. Uh, I do want to make this as inclusive as, as possible, which is why we, we're putting together a committee to help in this matter. Um, our meeting on the internal, uh, now have asked individuals that are interested to, uh, take action, to submit a letter of intent. Those are due by Friday. Uh, I will then go through applicants to, uh, make a decision on the appointment of the acting, uh, police chief. Questions on that?
Nope, good.
Great, um, I have, uh, I have a couple items for executive session, which do appear on the agenda, uh, but I wanted to get some time, uh, from my remarks to Joe, uh, who wanted to speak a little bit, and this will be his last council session.
Thank you. Everybody hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Yeah.
Okay, good. This is, uh, obviously the COVID-19, a very strange time to go out with this stuff. Don't catch a night in my city, I almost completes, uh, with my play from my phone, excuse my notes. Very good. I thank all of me, I just come at, make this, 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 I think, many people, um, I'm trying to, like, to make a brief, on a higher, that I served under, starting with the late Donald Austin Merrill, and then, uh, next Mayor, uh, Mayor Seamer, Mayor Kimball, Mayor Terese, and of course, Mayor Sunquist. I've enjoyed working with each and every one of them, all, all different in their own right, but all, uh, with heart, and, uh, we're all terrific people. Uh, all the very, um, women I've worked with, uh, including all of you, um, I give you all the credit for your public service, and, um, it's not an easy job, as you know, and I, I think you guys do tremendous work, uh, under, you know, tough conditions, especially from the professional, uh, side of things, and, uh, you, you deserve many thanks. And I, and I appreciate everything that, uh, I have learned from all of you, and, um, I, I've enjoyed working with all of you. I just thank, and, uh, all the years we have, has been working in, in each of the, friends have learned a lot from all of police, fire, DPW parks, the smaller district, uh, department here in City Hall, um, and, and I've enjoyed working with them. Uh, again, thanks to all the employees, uh, but I wanted a special little shout out to the staff here in the fire departments. Uh, you did a tremendous job, be a lot of them, all of these, and appreciate, and thank you one of them. Um, and then, we, I think of all the outside professionals, I'm pretty proud of the outside professionals that, uh, include bankers, uh, we talk about other, physical, or, or, or health managers, uh, agents, and all that. Goes on and on. All those people that work hard, they ask James to, to save us money, and they all have, uh, for many, many years. I give them a lot of thanks, without naming them individually. And finally, um, I am proud, um, to, uh, succeed in as comptroller, comptroller of the city of Jamestown. Ryan will do a great job. I have a hundred and fifty percent confidence in him. He's, uh, already doing the last couple months in the city, day-to-day operation, and, um, I'm trying to, uh, trying to last four months, just to give him the big picture on many, uh, different things that we deal with, and he's, and he's handled everything terrific, so I'm very proud of, of Ryan, and, uh, he'll, he'll do a great job. So, thank you, uh, thank you all very much. I appreciate giving me a few minutes to talk today. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe, um.
Thank you.
I hope you're good. I'm going to be there on, on Monday night, but, uh, you know, hopefully, we'll be on Zoom. Hopefully, we'll be back in, in the, uh, I was going to say a few words on Monday, but I know you, this is your last official meeting. I, I just want to thank you, and I know I speak for the entire council. Uh, I have had the privilege of working, finding chair for several years, and council president, and as a, and as a member of the county. Uh, it's been a quarter of a century, and, uh, it, it's been an odd year, with lots of changes and new administration and, and everything. And just, it's going to be strange. It's another piece, it's going to be different. But no pressure, Ryan, we've got big shoes to fill.
Man, that's right.
Joe has been great. You've always been accessible. You've always been honest and forthright and open with everything, and, uh, independent thinking when it comes to the, to the, uh, uh, budget and, and other numbers. It's, it's just the old saying, you give me the facts, and you always did. It was just that. Uh, it was never, it was never opinions or, or, you know, political this or that. You always said this is it, these are the bottom line, and, and, uh, just, I just want to thank you for all the years of service that, that we've had with the government, certainly, it's a personal mission, so thank you very much.
I, I appreciate that, Tony, and as you said, uh, of all the people I've, I've worked, uh, you know, in, in the elected officials, I've worked with you the longest, and, uh, it's been a great run, and I've, I've enjoyed definitely, with you.
All right, uh, with that, I think we have the two items for executive session. Uh, one is personnel matter, and the other, like, the garbage.
Uh, they're actually, I apologize, there are personnel items. One has popped up in between, so two personnel and one collective bargaining.
And one collective bargaining, okay? Uh, with that, uh, do I have motion to go into executive, uh, executive session for two personnel and one collective bargaining? So move by. Ryan, Housewoman, Rachel, Eklund, all in favor?
I.
Oppose?
Right.
Okay, uh, give the mayor a minute to turn off the recording and, uh, let us know when you're ready to go.
Thanks, President. Just in public, there will be, uh, no action taken from this executive session. Uh, and, uh, I would ask that, uh, Matt Coon continue on with us. Um, I think the rest of the staff, uh, should be, should be good.
Okay, before you go in and do that, though, I just want one more thing. Briefly, I just wanted to say that, uh, apologize for this evening with, it's bad enough being on Zoom and having, this is, it's very difficult, and it's awkward, and it's frustrating for us as well, and I'm sure it's gotta be awkward and frustrating for people to listen to as well, but, uh, uh, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks or so, we'll be back live and in action again. So I just wanted to make people aware, this was even more difficult than the new meeting, so, uh, again, you know, we'll get straight. With that, uh, you can, uh, do your math and unhook us.
Sounds good. Just give me a minute.